We do have one item on the agenda this evening, and that's our budget discussion surrounding 2022. So I will turn it over to Laura Smith.
Can you hear me? Oh, there we go. Yes, we are a little bit late getting started in our budget process to where we are typically, but we've had so many other things that have been coming at us that were very time sensitive that it's just kind of slowed us down, but we have plenty of time to catch up and still have very thoughtful and meaningful decisions before we get to August, when we need to finally adopt our budget and certify it to the county. So did we have, can we have the presentation up, please? I just did a brief presentation, and I apologize for the quality of this PowerPoint. They updated my computer today at about 2:00, and I lost most everything. So not my finest work in a PowerPoint, but you'll get the gist. Okay, that's fine. I think you can drive. Yeah. Okay, you'll go to the first slide, please. So I wanted to just kind of touch on the meeting agenda, what we want to kind of run through this evening. As you could tell from the memo, it's a pretty high-level overview, in part because we wanted, you know, we didn't have a chance for a retreat this year. We've done some surveying of budget priorities. We've talked about things. There's a lot of things that are still up in the air as it relates to COVID and its impact on us, both short term and long term. So we wanted to take some time tonight to just kind of generally talk about assumptions, priorities, both coming out of our February 2020 retreat and the 2022 budget survey, do a very high-level overview of general fund revenues. You will see in likely the next meeting setting kind of that detail that supports all of that. And then each department director, a member of the leadership team this evening, is going to give just a very brief kind of overview about, from their perspective, their budgets, some of the challenges and goals that they have, which then you will see translated into those line item department budgets. And last year was such a unique experience with the timing of when COVID hit us. We had two relatively new department directors at that point, who that was really their first budget cycle. And they didn't really get to have much of a budget cycle because there were a lot of other drivers through that process. And then now that we are heading into 2022, we've added a third new department director and chief Madden to that mix. So I always feel like you hear way too much from me during the budget process, and that it's really good and important for you to hear in their own words and have that opportunity to kind of interact with, with the members of the leadership team and their budget perspectives. We'll touch a little bit on the ARPA funding, and we'll have a good spoiler alert because we had an update today, general fund reserves, and then we'll kind of review the calendar, next meetings, next steps, make sure that we've identified everything else that you all want to address as we move through this budget cycle to, again, get us across the finish line by August. So next slide, please. Next slide, please. Thank you. The next couple of slides I really just pulled, again, from the memo, but thought it was important. I think sometimes when we think about all of the things that are coming at us or that we're dealing with on our agendas, it's, it's sometimes challenging, I know for me, and I think for all of us, to connect those back to the conversations that we've had a year and a half ago or two years ago, nearly in some cases. But tried to pull in and just touch on project priorities from our February 2020 retreat. And some of the other things that were identified in that retreat that weren't necessarily budgeted, but I thought it was important to include here because there was certainly some overlap, not surprisingly, with some of the responses that we saw in the budget survey that we did earlier this year. But continuing to evaluate opportunities for land acquisition to increase green space, save trees in the urban forests and connect civic uses, continued investment or increased investment in the tree canopy, creating a pedestrian crossing between Lamar and Barclay on Johnson Drive, creating technical specs for Public Works on the street side and building codes. And Celia, I think we'll touch just briefly on kind of street specs. That's actually in progress. Building codes is something that we brought to you all, I believe, in August of last year. Kind of it's temporarily kind of in a holding pattern out there as we look at some other climate action impacts or considerations. Support for the Climate Action KC programs or policies. We just had the work session recently to take a look at the playbook. One of the things we need to think about is how do we then start to incorporate that and, and implementation strategies or ideas from that that we may want to incorporate, either from a policy perspective or a budgetary perspective. Evaluation of policies surrounding use of TIF and CID. Again, back in February of 2020, we didn't have an inkling the Mission Bowl project was not on the horizon at that point, but we were talking about things like connecting it to sustainability goals. We were talking about things like affordable housing, both of which were, I think, very important components that got integrated into the negotiation of that, that project. Kind of a comprehensive code review, whether that's just a general scrub and revisit. There were specifically during the retreat some issues around animal control ordinances and codes that, that there was a request to look at. Converting street lights to LED, we know that's a portion or part of the FCIP proposal that we're currently considering, and then expanded neighborhood assistance programs. So. So that kind of, as then in March and April of this year, we sent out just a quick kind of budget priority survey. The full results of the survey were included in your packet, but just wanted to hit a couple of highlights here. I don't think any surprise that overall the top two priorities were street maintenance and outdoor park improvements, all of which we've been talking about for quite some time and will continue to as we look at renewing revenue streams and dedicated revenue sources. And then the question in the survey said, if there were one specific program or service that you could implement or would like to see implemented in 2022, what would that be? And those are listed here. So emphasis on city beautification, streets, planters, signage, a dog park, implementation of the Mohawk Park improvements with substantial progress on the entire project, creating a sustainable way for people's voices, whether that be residents, businesses, or employees to be heard. Again, LED streetlight replacement and residential street maintenance. So some duplication of priorities we've seen in other places and some newer ones that have been introduced here. So with that, that kind of set the stage and will help guide us as we move through the budget process and we look at supplemental requests that we'll be bringing forward to you or recommendations that we will be making for funding decisions in, both in 2021 and 2022. Because one of the things we know that, that worked well for us last year was as we were kind of in the midst of the pandemic and experiencing that, really keeping an eye on the current year's budget and potential impacts and being able to be flexible and react and respond to that situation, I think helped us end the year in a very favorable position. Certainly something that I think we want to continue even outside of, you know, if there is such a thing as post-pandemic ever. I think it's just a good, it's a good practice. And because we budget so far ahead of the start of our fiscal year and because that timeline is dictated by state statute, that, that review when we're in that annual budget cycle of the current year is important. So as we look at kind of the top revenue generators in the general fund, and we've talked about these pretty consistently over time. And just structurally, I think you're all aware, but for the public's benefit, we really approach our budget, which is made up of probably somewhere between 12 and 15 individual funds. We approach that kind of from two perspectives. One being those things that happen in our general operating fund, which is we look at, you know, revenues and expenses in the particular calendar year. Those are the revenues that support all of our operating departments and really the basic core services that we provide. And then we kind of also, as we go through the budget, we'll look at capital infrastructure or capital improvement funds. And those are our funds primarily because of dedicated revenue sources, where we are collecting revenues and then we are programming street projects and stormwater projects. So usually projects that are larger in scale, so exceed revenues in any particular year may require some debt financing and can take longer from design to construction than one particular fiscal year. And so although we allocate funds on an annual basis, we see many of those projects that carry over from year to year. So with our sales and use tax revenues, as we talked about, and I think have, have been able to really report positively on all the way through 2020 and continuing into 2021, sales tax revenue kind of saved the day last year. We had anticipated, and you may recall, last year we built some different modeling scenarios to kind of look at potential impacts and reductions in sales tax that we might anticipate. We ended up doing better than any of the reductions that, that we looked at, and that was primarily due to continued strong performance of both our sales and use tax revenues. So this chart just kind of highlights our, you know, our original budget. So the budget that we set back in the summer of 2019, we anticipated about $3.6 million in our city sales tax. We actually ended 2020 with $3.8 million. So we had reduced our budget. We had set this year's budget with still a reduction of about 5% to 7%. And we're going to suggest as we move through this process that we bump that back up. Revenues are continuing through, through year-to-date to be strong there. So we think comfortably that we can increase those, and we don't anticipate that we would see a reduction in those into the 2022 budget. County revenues, for some reason, have a little bit more fluctuation, but again, not much. And basically, the 2020 actuals held with that original 2020 budget and continue to track with that 2020 actual number into this year. So those. Let me get my pages caught up here. You know, I think we weren't any different than most of the other cities in Johnson County. Pretty much everyone experienced that same kind of maintenance or actually increase in many instances of sales tax revenues. And we're pleased to be able to think that, that would continue. Obviously, we've got the models built from last year. We'll continue to look at that if we see some sort of downturn or change in those revenues and receipts. We can certainly have the opportunity to adjust to that in the coming months or prior to the end of the year. Next slide, please. Property tax revenues. Again, this, we, we continue to see increases in our overall assessed valuation in the community, which is driving property tax revenues or helping to maintain property tax revenues and, and some incremental growth over time. Again, you'll see the 2021 budget, we're actually estimating even, we think we'll do a little bit better than our original budget figures. And 2022 proposed, based on the information that the appraiser provided back in February, we can anticipate an overall increase, again, in our assessed valuation in the community, driven like it has been for the last couple of years by increases in residential properties. Although commercial, commercial properties were driving that a little bit more strongly than they have in previous years. We will, we should get in the next couple of weeks our final assessed valuation. It doesn't typically vary much, but that's once the county has been through all of the appeals processes and adjustments. They certify that number to us at the end of June, and that's what we'll carry forward into the next year's budget. Our current mill rate is 17.048 mils. 10.048 mils of that is dedicated and stays in the general fund to support operations, and approximately seven mils of that is transferred to our capital improvement fund to, to support street improvements. And as we have talked about in the last couple of meetings, as we've been discussing renewal of the street sales tax, that, that seven, the amount equal to seven mils has grown over time. So it was originally set at about 750,000. And you can see we're now estimating somewhere between 1.1 and 1.2 million dollars. So the street program is benefiting from that increase in underlying assessed valuation as well without requiring an adjustment there. We expect that, based on the information that we've seen so far, about one mil in the 2022 budget will generate about $173,000. The other thing that we wanted to touch on this, this evening and that we've had some questions about is potential impact to our budget based on the dark store theory. And that being information that it's, or cases that are working their way through the system currently, where it started with big box retailers making the case that they were so unique in their size that they shouldn't be valued. They should be valued as if they were dark because there would be minimal uses or minimal opportunities for reuse of those buildings. The county appraiser has, has fought that, but they are now, I think we're waiting on, I didn't look at the date, but I think they, they've got a court of appeals hearing set, but they were unsuccessful, kind of in their first round. So that litigation continues. It's been around for several years. And so one of the things that's been around long enough, and now that is starting to expand to, to commercial properties like a CVS or office properties or apartment complexes. So this, the numbers that we've shown here are what has been identified based, based on specific properties that have either appealed or involved in that litigation. Depending on the final outcome, if some of the office buildings and apartment complexes stay in this mix, that impact could potentially be greater for us. But as you can kind of see, and there's, there's some pretty wide swings from year to year. So what the appraiser last updated and provided to us back in 2019, we've reflected in this chart, also included in your memo. And what you can see is kind of a little bit of a cumulative effect of more people or more types of properties sort of joining on in that process. And then other reassessments or reevaluations that have happened on those same properties over the last four years. Right now, that, looking back to 2019, so you could probably realistically add another $70,000 or so to that. The appraiser's last total for the city of Mission was about $272,310. I think we are still two to three, if not more, years away from a final decision. But I think it's prudent for us, once we, we're kind of at this point, to really start to look at, do we want to reserve funds in the event that the county is unsuccessful and that we will have to return these, these revenues and these receipts to those various property owners. Again, you can kind of see that depending on what happens on an ongoing basis, we could likely, in, you know, $3.1 million worth of revenues, account for these differences on an annual basis going forward. But we are reaching that point where it, it probably makes some sense. And I know some of our neighboring communities are beginning to look at setting aside and reserving funds to be prepared to address the impacts of the dark store theory. Any questions? I'll stop. I don't know if anybody has any questions on that one before we move on to. Okay, next slide, please. Probably where we all know we took the biggest hit in 2020 as a result of COVID was in our parks and recreation revenues. We had originally built a scenario and built a model estimating that we would have about a 50% reduction overall in parks and recreation revenues. And this is similar to information we shared with you when we did kind of a year-end recap back in February. But you can see overall in, in total revenue impacts, we lost about 68% of those revenues. We're starting to see some very, very slow, very incremental returns, particularly following the expiration of some of the county's public health orders and our opportunities to bring rental events and some other things back online. We'll continue to track that, but we know that our 2021 budget estimate is, is too aggressive at this point. So that 1.395 million, you'll see, just kind of based on where we are year-to-date, we've brought that down to about 775,000. Growing it slightly going into 2022, we'll have to continue to keep an eye on, certainly keep an eye on those revenues and their impacts. Part of that, you know, part of that growth that you're seeing, again, is just an increase. You'll remember that we reduced the size of our summer camp program by approximately 80 campers this year in order to be able to maintain some of our protocols and safety precautions. And rentals, we lost some of our longer-term rentals. And so we are looking at opportunities to either bring them back or replace them with other, other groups. But that was another category that was pretty dramatically impacted, and, and we expect it to be that impacted that same way for most of 2021. Next slide, please. Fine and forfeiture revenue. This is one where we actually saw a more dramatic decrease in the 2020 actuals than what we had estimated. Much of that was driven by a conscious decision to really limit stops and, and interactions, more routine interactions, just because of COVID. So, so I think those, those numbers were impacted there. And, and I think just some of the other things that have been front and center for the department in terms of, you know, building and maintaining community relationships has also contributed to, to that decrease in that activity. So we, when we put the 2021 budget together, we were saying that revenue stream would potentially recover more quickly because it wasn't tied to necessarily economic recovery. And I think that's still true, but I think that it's not so much the economy that's impacting that. But again, I think there are still COVID considerations there as well as just trying to, to figure out where, where we are and where we want to be in those interactions with our community. And it's, it's always difficult to look at what is a direct correlation, right? So the decrease, we don't see increases in traffic accidents. Some, some of those indicators, we continue to monitor and watch. But difficult in, in some cases to tie that there. So we're looking at reducing that. Again, we'll continue to watch that in 2021 and 2022, but we've brought them down to lower levels to be conservative, at least in our initial budget conversations. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so unless anybody has any questions, comments, thoughts about kind of the overall revenue highlights, what I'd like to do is invite the department directors up to kind of give you their brief overview of their department operations, challenges, and goals. Okay, Celia, we'll start with you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It looks like nobody else got the polka dot memo except for Laura and I. We're matched like twins. So I am very pleased to have the opportunity to present on the Public Works budget in our department tonight. Our mission for Public Works, and I kind of came up with it, so it could be.
Celia, Celia, get a little closer to the microphone, please.
Provide a data-driven systematic quality level of service in maintaining the city's infrastructure with available resources and funding. So we have 13 employees in our department with two vacancies right now. Brent and, Brent and I kind of tag-team on everything, so I'm going to quickly talk about what we do together. So besides department management, we manage the capital improvement projects. We perform private development reviews, so like the wing stand and the locale. We'll review the plans for site grading, stormwater, et cetera. And then once those projects are constructed, we inspect the right-of-way. We also have right-of-way permits for driveways as well as some of the Water One projects. So we keep busy with that. We've been inundated with resident requests and complaints this year. I think everybody was kind of staying indoors, and all of a sudden they're outside, and they're noticing lots of things that they want. So our biggest concerns are curb in front of driveway. We have a lot of deteriorated curb. We have drainage concerns, traffic. We're been working with the, the chief on, you know, people are speeding on my street. More traffic is out there. We also have patching and pothole requests, signage, like we'll have pedestrian crossings or stop signs or other requests like that. And then we also work on MPDS stormwater permitting. That's a lot of logging and data and making sure that we're checking the box so that every year we get our points for our permit. And then, like I said, we work with the Police Department on traffic concerns. Besides a mechanic and administrative assistant, the rest of our team is our operations crew. And I know that you all know most of what we do, but we, we're a jack-of-all-trades. We do a little bit of everything. So for streets, we patch asphalt, we fill in potholes, we crack seal, we sweep the streets, we snowplow, we do some concrete as far as curb and sidewalk. We're really not good. We don't have a curb machine, so we're really not good at long expanses of curb. I wish we were. But we can do limited curb in front of driveways if we need to. A lot of times we temporary patch it, and then it doesn't always stay. But with all the amount of curb, we try to get in, in there and fill in the big holes. And then, you know, sometimes it washes away the next year, and we have to go back until we can have a plan to fix it with our street or have a standalone curb project. We also perform special events, harvesters, adopt a family program, Mission Mart. We perform emergency response, such as when I showed you the picture of the signal with the tree falling down, you know, we'll go out, the police will call us, and we'll go out, put up barricades and remove the trees. So we do that. We do some landscaping where we spray weeds three times a year. We do some limited mowing and tree trimming. We pick up trash and recycle two times a week at facilities in Johnson Drive. We do some miscellaneous parks. And now that Penn has his new employee, he, he does a lot of the smaller work, but sometimes he needs more crew, so we'll get out, and we're still helping out in the parks. We clean the leaves out of inlets. We clean out some stormwater channels. We also subcontract if it's really big work. And then we can do some limited facility work. We're really thankful that you approved our Assistant Superintendent reclass because I think that's really going to optimize our operations, having someone in the field right there to make decisions and help plan. And it also helps free Brent up to do some of our project management and other right-of-way inspections and things like that. As far as the budget, I feel like we have a good maintenance budget. We don't have a lot of frills, but we typically have what we need. We really appreciate your support on the vehicle equipment replacement program. I think that's really helped us. And example of that is we were out in Mill Haven last week, and our roller broke down. And incidentally, we've asked for a roller in the 2022 budget, but it broke down, and we had some neighbor saying, why are they so slow? And so we scrambled, Brent scrambled to go and rent a roller for the week. And so that's an example of when we're out in the field, we want to get it, get in and get out. And it's important to have good equipment. We're really excited about the sales tax renewal and, and having a dedicated street funding so we can really plan ahead on our streets and, and explain the plan to the residents. It would be really nice if we had a dedicated pot of funding for standalone sidewalk, curb, stormwater, and pavement marking projects. I know Hillary is interested in that. And I know we only have so much money and we have so many needs. So that can come out of our street funding, but it would be nice if, here's my pitch for, it would be nice if we had some money every year that when people call and have concerns, we can say, you know what, we're going to add that to the list, and we have a limited pot of money, and we're going to take care of that next year. So I feel like our strengths for Public Works are, we have a versatile staff, jack-of-all-trades. You've kind of seen the list of what we do. We always get good reviews on our snowplows, so I feel like Brent has really dialed that in with the staff and does a great job every year. I believe we have good customer service. I mean, a lot of times we have to tell people no, and that's not fun. I mean, I'd, we would love to give us the money, and we'll go do everything we can. But, you know, unfortunately, that's not the case. But I feel like we try to be as responsive and work with other departments and just help out when we can. As far as challenges, before I go into that, Public Works has really evolved over time. I wasn't here, but what I understand is that we primarily used to do some of the activities, such as mowing, snowplow, performing some facility and limited park maintenance. And now, due to our commitment to maintaining our infrastructure and our increased redevelopment, our core focus has evolved into more street, curb, and stormwater maintenance. And so that goes into one of our challenges, those that we have a lot of deferred maintenance. So the more we do, the more requests we get, and the more streets we do. The more we do, the more requests we get and the more streets we do, people want us to do the next street. And so. It's a good thing, but it's a hard thing to keep up with. And we're really trying to be more proactive instead of reactive. And that's hard. Like right now, we just have such a backlog. Of requests and things that we're, you know, we're trying to develop a systematic maintenance approach, which I'll talk about in a little bit. So along with deferred maintenance, that's expectation management. We have limited funding, we have limited staff and we need to just. Really work on explaining to the residents that, you know, we have a plan, we're not going to get to it maybe tomorrow, but this is our plan and we're moving forward. So we're always working on that. Another thing is that I think we were only fully staffed for about two months of this year. Unfortunately. When our crew members are sick or on vacation, then we can't put our two crews out on the streets. And so. We'd love to just go out and patch all summer long and work on curb, but you know, we've got the trash Monday and Friday. And so that kind of limits us and I'm not complaining, just kind of explaining that, you know, we're. Trying to do a little bit of everything. So I think, you know, the 60% comp play, we really appreciate that. And if that goes into effect, I think that's really going to help. Keep us staffed fully. So we're excited about that. Another challenge that we're already working on is uniform standards and specifications. So for public improvements. That, we don't have adopted any technical specifications for public improvements. So like our street project, that doesn't mean we're not building to. Specifications. It just means that we're requiring overland parks and we really need our own because sometimes overland parks. Specs and standards will reference things that we don't do or we don't have a code for. Sorry, this gets a little hot for me. So I guess I have a lot of hot air or something. I don't know. So anyway, working on that right now to determine, you know, what's the best specification for us? We may borrow all overland parks and modify it or APWA, we're working on that. And then also, although we have building codes for buildings, we don't have. Codes, we have some design standards for Johnson Drive, but for example, I keep going to the wing stand, but that was the latest one is that we don't have any requirements for stormwater or parking lot. And so. Mission, in the old days, you know, you start up here and stormwater just drained to this site, then to this site, into this site with no pipe. And so. The person at the bottom of the hill is complaining, why do I get all their stormwater? So when these smaller sites come in, I'm trying to say, you need to pipe that and collect it, but. They're like, oh, we don't need to do it. It's not very much. And so if we had some standards, we could work on that and require that more. So that's something that is on the top of our radar. And then stormwater, you know, of course we're chipping away at stormwater with our street projects, but. With our channels and some of our larger stormwater issues, like if you drive around during a rain, you know, you see some of that standing water that. Is a challenge that we'd like to get to when we can as funds allow. So our goals are to try to be more proactive and develop system maintenance. So what that means, you know, instead of. Just responding to a complaint and going out and filling, patching here and patching there, we're trying to divide up the city into quadrants and. Go through each area, rate them, and then trying to hit one area, do all the patching, do all the curb and then move on to the next one. So we're still in the process of working on that. We're also developing a schedule. I know that it's, we're not going to be able to stick to it completely, but to say, you know, in the spring and fall, we're going to do concrete. In the summer, we're going to do patching so that when somebody calls, we can say, okay, we'll put you on the list, but it's not going to be till the fall. This is sounds simple, but a customer complaint spreadsheet so that. We can really keep track of what people are asking about. And then a lot of times people will call, then they'll call the next person, they'll call the next year and it's good to have that record. So we know. What we told them last time and what the issues are. And then developing some tracking sheets so that we can keep track of where we're doing potholes. A lot of times someone will call and say, I hit a pothole and you're liable and I'm going to, you know, request. Funding, but if we can get to that pothole, if we document when they were told about it and we got within 48 hours. Then that helps us not have liability. So really dialing in our street program with our curbing and sidewalk and patching and those things I talked about. Working on signs. I think you got an email about the Lamar no parking signs that are faded. We have like 50 no parking signs on Lamar. So working on that. And trying to do an overall look at our signs to see what we need and what we don't need because. Too many unnecessary signs that people ignore that. I talked about the specs that we're working on, construction standards, and then the right of way program. I would really like to update our right of way permit. And kind of dial that in a little bit better. As far as our future needs, we're already working on asset management. We've done a lot, you know, and we have a 10 year plan on our facility and we're working on our streets. We have cartograph where we document. A lot of what we do, but we really don't have a dedicated person to keep that up as well as we want to. So eventually if we could find somebody. I don't know if that's a part-time position, but to do more in asset management, we could have some work order systems and. Things like that to really optimize what we do. We're already keeping track of it, but it would be better if we could have a little bit more capabilities. And then we're always looking at our operations and our future needs and what can we do to optimize and be more efficient. So. That's it. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Yeah, you know, on Lamar project, well, did we use it on Lamar? Whenever we build a new street. You know, they get the curb machine and they just will go out and pour long lengths of, of curb and concrete. And so the, the street crews like Superior Bowen have that, but we don't have that. I don't even know that we would be. Really capable of doing that and whether it'd be cost effective. So. What we'd like to do is if we had a pot of money, then we could, you know, let's have $50,000, you go in and do this curb. And I think we could save a lot of money by doing that. Thank you so much. We appreciate that input. Yes. No, because we don't have somebody to really staff it. So we like, we have our streetlights inventory all in there and our signs. But that's what I'd like. If we had some, a person that we could go to each address and go, okay, this is what they complained or requested last year. Well, so if we had somebody that could really devote enough time for it, then we could have them working on customer complaints and. Work, work order requests so that we knew exactly when somebody requested this pothole, we went in there and fixed this pothole on this day, you know, more of that data. We're doing some of that with spreadsheets, but not to that level extent. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So Parks and Recreation brings health and wellness to the forefront of our citizens' considerations. We promote engagement with the. Community through volunteerism, event and programming attendance, engagement with nature through open space and, and trail access. Free of congestion and just teeming with wildlife. And engagement with family and friends through park excursions or individual walks of reflection and fitness. Each of these builds a strong quality of life and identity for citizens that we continue to establish. And promote in all that we do because we realize that parks are a reflection of a community. And contribute to a healthy and productive citizen base. So. Just like every department, we face challenges and we fully acknowledge that memberships have taken a significant hit both here. At the community center as well as at the MFAC and that trend was only exacerbated by COVID-19. It was continuing long before. COVID hit. Unfortunately, that. Hit our long-term rentals as well. So. Operating systems are not fully functioning most of the time, both here and at the MFAC. And that creates downtime, which frustrates our patrons and those frustrations carry into our staff. And finding and retaining staff is difficult when you're continually dealing with frustrated patrons. Newer facilities from neighboring communities surrounding us, newer parks, newer investment in parks. And then catching up on deferred maintenance at the community center. As well as investing in our outdoor parks is always a balance, you know, it's, it's a tightrope act. And we try and strike the perfect balance, but unfortunately you can't meet everyone's expectations all the time. And lastly, Parks and Recreation sales tax renewal weighs heavily on our long-term planning. We all know that. Whether that's three eighth cent or less and whether that's even fully supported by the citizenry. Kind of impacts a significant portion of anything that Parks and Recreation can do. And despite these challenges, we've got, we've got significant strengths. We're reaching more people through social media. Our consistent branding and identity elements have impacted. Us profoundly and we've heard great feedback. And I think we've seen better engagement through the website and, and through some of those channels as well as the activity guide. We are finding our niche and are slowly winning back some of the. Long gone members as well as those who we knew were just taking a short-term hiatus. And some of that is because we, they know that we'll continually invest in strength and cardio equipment, which is about to come online here in the next month and a half. Our parks, facilities and amenities are centrally located. That's one of the, one of our. One of our unique strengths and we're actively reallocating resources toward our parks. You can, you can see that we. We hired a parks technician. He's out there at our parks daily. Engaging with the citizens, hearing their feedback and they're so excited to see somebody onsite consistently just investing in, in what they cherish. And ultimately we want to take care of what we have. So a crucial part of that is partnering with entities and leaning on them when we are shorthanded. Our Adopt a Park program is thriving. We've set up a few more partnerships through there and obviously Mission Marlins. We treasure and have seen the impact of their swimmers grow through the ranks and then continually give back in the community. So. We're grateful for that. Would be remiss if I didn't emphasize the fact that our full-time team is one of our greatest strengths because they took. All the COVID programming, fitness, downtime, all of those challenges and. Not, not always with a smile, but consistently meeting the challenge day in and day out and delivering alternatives. For our community, which was, which is amazing. We've got certifications that we, that are priority within our department. Aquatic Facility Operator. Park Safety Inspector. We've got Parks and Recreation Professional as well as OSHA 10-hour. And we, we value those certifications and look at those as an opportunity for our team to not only develop skills, but to. Share in the experience of leading out in some of our departmental goals and, and sharing that, that workload. And lastly, we're a major employer. We, we employ over a hundred part-timers at our peak and those individuals. It's difficult to get a unified vision at any one time, but we do a pretty darn good job of, of, of training them up to a high-quality standard, keeping them safe. Keeping them engaged with the children and adults that, that they're serving and, you know, a large portion of them come back year after year. So. Our focus, lastly, is on increasing membership by reaching new targeted. Patrons, delivering memorable experiences in programs, events and, and more fitness classes. Ultimately completing some of our capital improvement projects and then finalizing the conceptual redesign of our parks master plan. So we, we understand that Parks and Recreation are a crucial part of building stronger, healthier, more engaged community. And are proud to share in that responsibility with you all. Any questions? Thank you. Thanks.
I was asked to provide an update to you all on the community development department this evening. Our motto, the community development department helps plan, build and care for the city of Mission through the following activities. Planning and zoning, building and site development, maintenance of existing neighborhoods. We currently have five budget positions, including a building official, neighborhood services officer, community development coordinator, planner and office assistant. And all of those individuals handle a variety of different tasks. The titles are probably a little bit self-explanatory. Our building officials responsible for building safety. Which is review of building plans, inspections as construction proceeds. And then addressing issues with building safety as they arise. Our neighborhood services officer is responsible for routine. Property maintenance, which essentially means driving around the city and looking for tall grass and. Gerolich vehicles sitting in the driveway, et cetera, also signs. And that keeps her pretty busy. She responds to concerns that are brought up by citizens. As well as does proactive enforcement. Our community development coordinator is primarily in the office right now, but he's working and coordinating. The various grants that we offer for neighborhood services support, our business improvement grant. Our Mission Possible Grant. Sustainability. Trying to think of the word, the grant for basic stormwater management. And then our planner obviously does plan review as well as assistance and long-term planning. And then our office assistant kind of runs the show in terms of answering the phone and coordinating everybody's activities and making sure that we're all going in the right direction. We have a number of significant development projects over the past few years that have really kept our department very, very busy. And I think sometimes we just have to kind of stop and reflect a little bit on all the activities that have been going on in the community over the last few years. So I'll just kind of go through a. Very brief list. Construction of the locale apartment building, 6201 Johnson Drive, construction of Title Wave Auto Spa, 6501 Johnson Drive. Renovation of the Down Syndrome Guild, learning, learning campus at 5916 Dearborn. Renovation of STEM Hair Salon, 5959 Broadmoor, that's the old Johnny's Barbecue Restaurant. Renovation of Taco Bell, which was a Qdoba, which was a Shalotzky's, 6350 Johnson Drive. Renovation of Wings by Jefferson's at 5438 Johnson Drive. That's the old Pride Cleaners at the corner of Knoll and Johnson Drive. We're currently reviewing remodeling of Target at 62 or 6100 Broadmoor. Preliminary file development plan for Mission Bowl Apartments, 5399 Martway. Numerous tenant finishes, both retail and office spaces, too numerous to mention here. We've had six new home constructions over the last probably three years. And then we've had numerous home additions, remodels, accessory structures, decks, roofs, hot water heater replacements. That's actually gone up quite a bit in the last year due to COVID. People spending a lot of time at home, kind of looking at their four walls and thinking, I want to expand. I want to put an addition at the back of the house. I want to have. An accessory structure in my backyard, it's kind of office. I can just sort of go there and get away from the family for a little while and do some work. So it's been quite a bit of that in the past year. We also have some pretty significant development projects on the near horizon. Obviously we have the construction of the Mission Bowl Apartment Building itself, which is slated for 21, 22. Construction of a new element, Russian Elementary School, which is slated for 2023. And then Johnson County wastewater is making a number of significant updates to their facilities here in Mission. And I don't think a lot of us realize that, but they have quite a bit of investment here in our community. They have three different. They have three different pump stations, as well as a treatment plant on the north side of Mission on Knoll. That treatment plant was built in the 1940s, and it's been added on and expanded over the years. And it's kind of reached the end of its useful life. So they're beginning the very initial stages of basically designing an entire new treatment plant for that location. And they'll probably be starting construction in 24, 25. If anybody drives down 435, kind of by Mission Road there, the old, that called, the old Tomahawk Creek Treatment Plant. You've seen all the construction activity going on there. It'll be similar to that. So it'll be a significant project. They'll have onsite engineers, onsite inspectors, but there will be a little bit of oversight on our part, incorporating Celia as well as Jim Brown, our building official. So those, a lot to keep us busy for the next few years. Other projects that are currently underway, as Laura mentioned in the update of the Conference of Land Use Plan. This project was started in the fall of 2020 with a web-based community engagement tool to survey thoughts and opinions on a number of elements that are important to the development of our community, including density, type of development, housing options, place-making, and trails and streetscape enhancements. The steering committee comprised of members of the community have been analyzing the initial findings from this engagement process, as well as other elements of the land use plan, including transportation and land use itself. Initial recommendations are being formulated right now for review and further discussion by the steering committee. The Directional Finder Survey is now underway as well, and will provide further information for the steering committee to review. We're planning to have a joint meeting of the Planning Commission and the City Council later this summer to kind of discuss our findings. And then the initial draft is expected to be ready late this summer, probably August, early September, for review by the public. And that'll become a second opportunity to gather public input and engage them in further discussion about that. And then a final draft would be ready probably this fall, October. So we've, we've been taking our time. We've been meeting virtually, but we've been kind of slowing down the process a little bit to allow for input. And then we're actually hoping that we can start meeting in person. So our next meeting is going to be end of this month, and right now, we're planning to do that in person in this room. So it'll be the first time for the steering committee folks to actually meet face-to-face and be able to interact with staff and the consultants. So looking forward to that opportunity. Land use management software, we've been calling it permitting software, but that's really what it is, is a land use management software. This project was initiated last winter with an initial review of software available for planning, permitting, and general land use management applications. Staff will begin working on a request for proposals in the near future with anticipated date of release amid to late July. Review of proposals and recommendation for an acceptable solution will be presented to the City Council in early fall. Implementation expected to begin late 2020, early 2021. We were kind of asked to talk about challenges, I rather call them major initiatives. But a part of this land use management software is really kind of process improvements. This is a perfect opportunity to kind of go back and review and reevaluate how we do business and where there are opportunities to make improvements. We've been kind of doing that as we've been going along the past year, reviewing a lot of these plans and working these projects and finding opportunities where we could have done this a little better. How could we have done that better? And thinking through that. So that's something that we're working on. We need to start working a little bit more diligently. But there's lots of opportunities just in the way we accept applications, we review applications, how we apply standards to those reviews and applications. Timely feedback to the applicant includes checklists. Celia was talking a little bit about standards for both public and private improvements. That's certainly a component of this process. But this is kind of an overall reevaluation of how we do our, our plan review process. And then what kind of ties into as well is zoning code updates. This is something that ties very closely with the rewrite of the city zoning ordinance. The current zoning ordinance has a number of inconsistencies that makes the application and administration of the plan, plan challenging at times. So the, our current zoning ordinance was written in 1964. And it's been added to and changed and tweaked over the years to the point that when you read one section, it doesn't quite match up with, it's in another section. And it may not quite match up with other parts of the codes unrelated necessarily to the zoning ordinance. So we have found this a little bit frustrating, the sort of, oh, we didn't know about that change or this application over here. And so something that it kind of is cleaner, it's easier to understand. A lot of modern-day zoning ordinance have pictures in them that better explain what the zoning ordinance is trying to regulate and how and why. And it's something also too that will reflect a lot of the recommendations that come out of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Possible review of design guidelines. We have a document known as the Johnson Drive Design Guidelines. It's probably about 12 to 15 years old now. Again, we've struggled a little bit at times with the application of, of that document. It pretty much, even though it says Johnson Drive, it pretty much applies to all the commercial properties in our community. And when we look at those design drive guidelines, we often kind of think about that corridor Johnson Drive, what I call the traditional downtown from basically Lamar to Knoll. But there's other components of Johnson Drive, and of course, the entire West Side Commercial District, which has different types of land uses, different types of buildings. So sometimes it's a little difficult to design guidelines and apply it to those particular properties. And then we're also running to a little bit of a challenge where, frankly, the market property owners are just wanting to do some different things with their property in terms of color selection, design of the building, et cetera. Not that it's necessarily bad, it's just sort of a reflection of a change of times and taste and so forth. So I, I think that's probably due for review and refresh. And then finally, the building code update. As Laura mentioned, we presented this to you all probably almost a year ago now. And we kind of set it on the back burner to get further consideration to the energy codes. There's been a lot happening at the national level with the energy codes and the International Code of, Council of Codes, which is the governing body that creates that document and administers it. I can go into more detail later date, but we, you know, a lot of our applications are now bringing in plans in accordance with 2018 codes, and we're still in 2012 codes. So we kind of need to get ourselves caught up a little bit with everybody else in the metropolitan area. So we need to come to some resolution on that. Have any answer any questions? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sitting here to talk to you about what the police department uses their budget for and, and what, what we use and need, and some of our challenges as well. Not to go back to sociology or psychology one-on-one, but Maslow's hierarchy of needs, safety and security is, is right there among the basics. So we strive to provide that for our community, and we do that 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. We are always ready to respond in a professional manner, and we hold our, we hold those values very deeply. We're professional, well-trained, well-equipped, accountable, and, and ready to respond at moments' notice. Our goal is to enhance the city with the main objective being to prevent crime, so residents, businesses, and visitors feel safe. Current staffing, we are currently at 28 sworn. We are allotted for 29, and we have four civilian staff. And that number has remained the same since the early 2000s. We haven't had any additions to our staff. I guess technically we have when we converted NEAC over to the CSO program, but it was the same. And we strive to build new relationships with our community and also foster the ones that we already enjoy. We accomplish all this through three divisions, essentially. We have the patrol division, which is what you all see on the streets every day, respond to calls for service. Our main goal is prevent crime and reduce crime, but we also are prepared to respond to it as well. Also accidents in any other call for service. We receive a wide range of calls that have no criminality to them, including persons in crisis, which I know is a very important topic. I'll, I'll tell you a little story about that. As the last three days, I've been out in Alaska at the National Correspondent Conference. So in 2020, our average response time for emergency calls was two minutes and 52 seconds, which is a, which is a pretty good, pretty good response time. So you know, we're going to be there as fast as we can while being safe, of course. Responded to 15,284 calls for service. We took 2,684 initial, initial reports. And I say initial reports because the next category is investigations. So after an off, so an officer goes and takes a report, and then if, if they're, depending on the nature of the crime and the leads, it goes to investigations to be followed up on. Detectives process crime scenes for evidence, they interview and interrogate witnesses and suspects. We investigate a significant amount of deaths in our community, but most of them are non-criminal. So when you, when you think about the amount of time that we spend on that, and, you know, people talk about clearance rates and things like that, those aren't factored into clearance rates. They're, they're just what we do because we need to make sure that deaths are investigated appropriately to make sure nothing nefarious occurred. Detectives also assist victims with navigating the criminal justice system. So they, they hook up the victims of crimes with the resources that they may need, whether it be with Safe Home or Sunflower House or through just the DA's Office Victims Assistance Unit. They obtain search warrants and subpoenas for records. It's amazing, the complexity of cases that has changed over the last, especially since I've started. We also have members that are on the Officer Involved Shooting Team and the Metro Squad. So we assist other agencies in those when they have a need, and they will assist us if we have a need. So investigations also has a primary duty for internal affairs investigations. So any significant complaint that comes in, we handle by somebody in the Investigation Division, generally a supervisor. We conduct all of the police department background investigations for hiring. We, that takes a significant amount of time to, to make sure that we're hiring the best possible people we can. And in 2020, investigations followed up on 348 cases. And then there's Support Division. They're responsible for record management, property and evidence room. Essentially, all of the systems in the city, the phone system, the camera system, the proxy card system is all managed in the police department, as well as, as well as other computer programming and networking issues. Their staff support also supervises the CSO unit. Some of the other additional services we provide to our community are the house watch program, fingerprinting services. We do crime prevention surveys at homes and businesses to try to give people tips on how they can reduce their vulnerability to, to crime. We hope the Citizens Academy, we do car seat installations. We still have a prescription drug drop-off bin in our lobby that we think is a very important service to continue to provide to our community. It's well-used. And we also continue to have the Dare Program, which puts us in the schools with kids so we can build relationships with the kids as well as their, their families. And I think that's, that's proven to be an effective way for us to have good, good reaching out with our community. Some of the things that drive our expenses, obviously salaries and, and those personnel things are the highest driver of our. But other than that, training and equipment are the two highest things that, that drive our budget. Training, as you all know, we are required to go to a certain amount of training every year. We're required to take certain training classes every year, as well as qualification with, with handgun and rifle. But we don't stop there. Forty hours a year can't touch on the wide variety of issues that we respond to. It can't get us to where we need to be to be better at de-escalation and, and those things. And speaking of, this is the story from, from the Co-Responder Conference that I was really struck by, because I know I've told you all this before, but currently, all, all but one of our personnel that is assigned to patrol is CIT certified. And certification is, is more than just going to the class. There's, there's additional training and testing. I was at the Co-Responder Conference and hearing, listening to a sergeant that runs an entire unit in a large city in Washington. And one of the things that he was bragging about was hoping that he could get his whole unit certified. And that's all they do. So we have really stepped up and made sure that we are prepared to respond to these calls that are so important. And then equipment. So obviously, our vehicles and our vehicle maintenance budgets are, depending on how old the fleet is, the vehicle maintenance budget tends to rise and rise. Then we also spend a significant amount of money on software and licensing for the CGIS, the Criminal Justice Information System, our records management system. This, we're left that will come out of when, when, when we are due to pay it again. Also, you know, everything that you see on, well, on me right now, you know, this is, I mean, I probably have, I'm probably worth $4,000 right now. So don't tell anybody, I'm going to go out the back door. So we also have the NCARB and body cameras that are extremely valuable to us and to the community. Now, radios are very expensive. If I had had my radio on, I'd be worth $7,000. And then, you know, just all the other PPE and evidence processing equipment and evidence packaging equipment, all of those things are just add up to, that, that lead to where our budget is. The challenges we have are recruitment and retention. I think every police department would probably say that's top of the list right now, is finding a difficult time finding people that want to do this job for, for a wide variety of reasons, whether it be shift work or, you know, just the uncertainty of, of what's going on in our country right now. It's just not the best time. You see things like, I don't know if anybody else saw this, but North Kansas City is blasting out that they're going to start police officers with zero experience for $50,000, and they're going to lateral over people up to $75,000. So it's just really becoming just such a, everybody's competing for the same small group of people. And one of the things that we have, that Laura and I have talked about a little bit is maybe opening up, if we find the right people, to hiring some part-time staff that might help us fill some of our holes that we have. Staffing for us becomes extremely critical. Like right as I sit here and talk, you know, we have an officer out on an injury. We have an officer out with a medical. We have an officer on military leave. And you take three people out, and we have, you know, it drives overtime up significantly. It also has those other effects that I'm trying so hard not to have with their, with their wellness. I don't like that we, it's like fingernails on a chalkboard when I hear that somebody has to, like, not have a day off. You know, we need that. Everyone needs that. So we, it also decreases our training opportunities, decreases morale. And most recently we've had, during this time, we've had to move a detective into patrol temporarily. And what that does, that, one of our other challenges is the increased complexity and nature of the crimes that we are seeing and having to investigate. And not that maybe the crimes are so much different, but they, they, everybody has a phone and everybody has records of, you know, text messages. And I mean, every case you could probably go and get a search warrant subpoena for a phone and there would be enough probable cause to do so. And so that, and as an example, last week, within an eight hour period, there were two cases that came in that will require, I am estimating one detective at least one month of work for each of those cases because of the complexity and the seriousness of those crimes. And we want to make sure that we do that professionally and we find the truth and we present a good case to the district attorney's office so they can review it to see if we can get, hold people accountable that commit these crimes. And then IT, IT is, is our, another challenge that we have. As I, as I said, we manage most of the systems within the city, being the computer system, the camera system and all of those things and heavily involved with Microsoft. That takes, that takes a lot more skill set than a, than a police officer has in general. So that, the networking and cybersecurity issues are a challenge that we face. One of our goals, and I actually have this coming up in a couple of weeks, and I work with Johnson County Mental Health and our other partner agencies to determine the need for adding an additional co-responder and/or what that threshold looks like to tell us when we do. So we're trying to find that sweet spot and working with the Marion Police Department Chief. We have a meeting set up to discuss that with, with Johnson County Mental Health. So we know if we're there now, if, when they think we will be there. And so we'll know more in a few weeks to be able to report back. We're going to continue to enhance our data, data-driven decision-making in hopes that we can reduce crime and settle into a new structure that we can implement all the things that I've told you guys about for the last six or seven months about wellness and development of our future leaders. And also want to research grant opportunities for us to look at equipment purchases as well as community outreach programs. And, and maybe as well to enhance our crisis intervention responses. So as I said, we're here 24/7, 365. We will always be here and we appreciate your support and the community support. Having that support makes this job a whole lot easier to do and it is very much appreciated. Do you have any questions? Yes, ma'am? Well, we, we don't have, we don't do DUI checkpoints anymore. They, they aren't. We just don't, they, there are cities that still have them. We just don't because it was proven to be more effective to have randomized patrols that specifically target that. When, when, with the invention of cell phones and Snapchat and all those other fun things, you can tell when that first tweet goes out saying that there's a check lane at Shawnee Mission Parkway and all, because there's no traffic anymore. Yes?
Chief, do you know if we'll have the co-responder information in time to inform this budget cycle?
Well, I know what Marion, what Marion is anticipating, since they, if we go in and share another co-responder, you know, we obviously there's, well, technically I guess six or seven cities that share it, but five, five are the, the major ones and the two small ones. So Marion pays the line, the, the highest percentage for the current one. We're going to try to work with the other cities to see if they have an interest. And then we'll have to go from there to see where, where our funding, what our funding looks like. Initially, they were anticipating adding in '23. Adding, so adding the position for a 2023 budget. I've talked to him a little bit and if they feel like we, we have that need more quickly, he thinks that he could probably at least get the hiring process started and training process started maybe in '22, but we're just going to have to work through that as, as we learn more and see what their applicant pool is like. Because that's, that's the hard part is finding the right person to, that can fill that role. The, we have some, some of our, like our, our IT contractor doesn't do much with the programming of, of like software. They do more of the physical hard drive and, and protection of our network. But it's my understanding that there is a lot on the backside of like Office 365 and making sure that all those settings and those suspicious emails that come, that get put in, put in the whole, on hold box that have to be gone through and some of those other things that we just, you know, it's just proven to be more and more of a challenge for, for an officer sergeant to handle. It's, it's, um, it's going well as far as the service. You know, some, some of the things that I saw and I've already started to change is that we, when we came to you years ago to switch over to the CSO instead of NEAC, it was with the idea that they were going to be doing a lot more things. And we really, they haven't, they haven't been doing those things much. So I've started implementing their more robust training programs for them so that they can take reports that aren't, you know, serious in nature, walk-in, you know, depth report or things like that. We're not going to have them do, you know, a serious person crime report or anything like that, but, and then more traffic control stuff and thing, those, those type of activities that, that the program was kind of sold on, but never kind of got off the ground. Another issue that we've had is this is the first time in a long time that we've been fully staffed. So we've had some, you know, personnel issues with either hiring or injuries and things like that, that have kind of slowed the process down in those regards. But as far as the service they provide, I'm, I'm hearing good things. I don't know from 2000. I know that we will probably, we'll probably go over the 10,000 mark with this next, next year. I would imagine with the, the locale and just the occupancy levels of our apartment complexes are significant. It's hard to compare us with some of the other cities because so many other cities have grown because their cities have grown. They've developed, you know, out west, south, whichever direction they can go. But the, I'm not concerned so much with the number as long as the numbers are filled. We, we always want to have three officers out on the street at the minimum. And with all those things, the days off vacation, training, all the paid time off, that can create a challenge with the schedule when you have too many people that are gone at once. So the number of officers, I, I'm, I'm kind of waiting to see what happens to make a determination of, of where the 29th would be best suited, whether it be in patrol or investigations, because right now investigations is, is, is hurting. They're, they have a lot of backlog forming and I don't like, I don't like those to be held too long. There, there was a very, one very informal dare. I don't even know if he called it a dare graduation. I don't, it was just, I think it was just a graduation of sixth grade that was assisted with. So, and I don't think, I don't know what the school's policy is for having people because I didn't know that he, I couldn't go. There is a police officer that's stationed there that used to be from the sheriff's office. And so, and that was beneficial because they have jurisdiction countywide. And since their students come from countywide, it gives, it gave them wider, wider authority to address issues out that were school-related but in another jurisdiction. But I think now that's just Shawnee Mission School District Officer. We have tried, we have, we have tried to do some engagement there and, and I'm hoping to really come up with some good youth outreach programs. No, no, nothing ongoing.
Good evening, Mayor Council. I have the short job of talking about administration, not nearly as colorful as my predecessors. But the city budget supports seven full-time staff people in finance and administration. These staff people provide internal services through human resources activities, communications, public record management, a portion of our technology support, finance and accounting, budgeting and support of our legislative activities. In 2020 and 2021, in addition to our usual duties that you are very familiar with, we did implement enhanced online forums and online payment services initially in response to COVID-19 and the closure of City Hall and some of those modernizations, but also because we know it's good practice and more and more the expectation that you'll have those services online or over the phone as the case may be. We did update the website, as I know you all know, implemented and launched the Direction Finder survey just recently and are, as you know, engaged in the Facility Conservation Improvement Program, classification and compensation studies and updates and, and more. If there's any questions on administration, I'm happy to answer. I'm also going to address municipal court services. The city budget supports our judicial services through the municipal court, including three full-time court clerks as well as services for Judge, Judge Pro Tem, city attorney and prosecutors. Certainly I know you've all heard and seen that the court clerks did an incredible job adapting to COVID-19 and have been extremely flexible in adapting our services for court patrons and for safety. We've used now our dockets that used to be all in person throughout the week are a variety. They're using all the tools available. So some are video and Zoom with the attorney dockets, some are phone, phone-in dockets, some are in person. Our trials remain in person and our traffic docket remains in person. But we're finding that really great success with that modification and it's different audiences and constituent groups that take advantage of the different types of dockets that we're holding and finding good use with that. As I mentioned earlier this evening, the ticket numbers are down throughout 2020 and, and still now 2021. But what has occurred in changing the format of our dockets is that the court clerks and other staff are handling a lot of things during the workday and they're in place of things being handled in the court hours with attorneys present. Our court clerks are stepping up and performing things via email or over the phone during business hours and, and making that work for everyone. So their workload has shifted, but it's still significant even with the lower level of tickets issued. You know that we've, thanks to your funding, we've transitioned now to, or we will be transitioning to a new court software. We are heavily paper and very antiquated and using an access database still in court. So this implementation of the new court software will be revolutionary and we're in the midst of that transition now. We'll be watching the budget impacts of that in terms of just where we need staffing, how much staffing, what that will do to us as we move to a paper light system and what we hope will be much more efficient court services. But we will report back to you with those changes that we'll be discussing for probably future budget years. If you can take questions or that's what I have. Thank you.
Last two operating departments that we budget for are general overhead and legislative. General overhead accounts for all of those things that aren't easily attributed to a specific operating department. So utilities at City Hall, City Hall repairs and maintenance, property taxes on the various city-owned properties, our overall IT services for everyone but the police department. They carry their share of the DTI contract in their budget, website hosting and that sort of thing. As, as Emily just referenced though, what we don't do through that general overhead budget is include any personnel costs. And certainly when we look at HR services, accounting and some of the things and those costs and salaries that are carried in administration, they are truly shared throughout the organization. But historically because of our size, in part, it's just easier for us to, to keep those in, in kind of one department. Then on the legislative side, that's the budget that accounts for council salaries and, and more of your programs and, excuse me, services. So that's your salaries, your travel, your training, any particular election that we might have. So whether that we're in a regular election year cycle, people are physically going to the polls or that's where we would also pay for mail ballot elections like we will be doing later this year. That's where we pay for memberships for National League of Cities, the League of Kansas Municipalities, Mark and those other professional, regional, national organizations that keep us connected to best practices and give us great opportunities, I think, to network with peers, not only regionally, but really across the country. We have budget for our farmer's market, budget for our various boards and commissions that come out of the legislative budget as well as just some general public relations. So contributions to some of our annual celebrations and things like that, volunteer recognition dinner when we can have that in a non-COVID environment and many of those kinds of things. So I think that fairly cut and dried, we have shifted. Many, many years ago, the council's legislative budget carried a lot of the assistance programs in those line items. And we transitioned several years ago when we went to a neighborhood services, community development format to move the majority of those into that department so that they were more visible and, and probably better connected, at least from a public perspective. So be happy to answer any questions there, but general overhead and legislative are pretty short and sweet.
Okay. Well, I think we appreciate your time this evening. I know it's helpful, at least from my perspective, to listen to our department directors talk about their departments and their operations. I think it's also helpful to listen to that before you're looking at line item details. So our hope is, is that you can take much of what you heard this evening and carry that forward in our continued conversations with maybe a bigger picture view of programs and services and goals and objectives and challenges. I know for me, I'm a numbers person. And so when you put that line item budget in front of me, I get distracted by the numbers and the bottom line pretty quickly. So we hope this will be helpful. What, what I do want to touch on is a lot of what you heard tonight, you will see come forward in the form of supplemental requests. So as departments talked about either their challenges or their goals, we'll have the opportunity to look at those kind of.
their challenges or their goals, we'll have the opportunity to look at those kind of on individual decision package basis. Some of the things that you heard this evening, you will not see as supplemental requests in the 2022 budget, but we wanted to include them in our conversation so that you have a sense and that we can work together, you know, looking longer term. So what may be a 2023 or 2024 budget so that you have a comfort level that we're anticipating, planning for. And although we may not make that specific request in this current budget cycle, that we do have a plan to bring that back. And we can certainly elaborate on that when we go through those supplemental requests. Some spoiler alert. So for example, in 2022, you're not going to see any requests for new staff in any department. Part of that is still an uncertainty of where our revenue streams may recover. We know that is our most significant expense citywide, and we want to be very judicious. For us, it is both a financial issue and a space issue, quite frankly. So I think what you heard in some of the department presentations, I hope, was a flexibility and adaptability to looking at the changing needs, whether that's, you know, we previously, for example, as Brian talked about a building inspector, we previously contracted building inspection services, in part because we didn't feel we had the volume on an annual basis to be able to support a full-time position. We now absolutely have the volume to support that full-time position and then some. And so we do try to look at, you know, Penn talked about the reallocation of, of an existing maintenance position here while still maintaining the standards and being able to be responsive to what we hear the public and the council and, and our own staff saying, and that is, let's pay some attention to our park system, right? Public Works has done a great job, but that day-to-day TLC, being able to follow up quickly on those little things, really, we think will have a long-term benefit and impact. So that's something that we're committed to. You know, as the chief also mentioned with the CSO program, staffing, I think we're, we're looking at how can we meet those needs as those needs change and have a staff that is flexible and adaptable enough to be able to respond to those challenges. So you'll see several supplemental requests, but people will not be among them, at least initially for your, the 2022 budget requests. Okay, next slide, please. Thank you. So very quickly, American Rescue Plan Act funding, we know that we benefited from a distribution of CARES Act funding in 2020 that was provided to the county and then allocated on kind of a formula that the county decided and dictated to communities. But we had a significant number of strings attached to the CARES funding. Couldn't be spent on replacement of lost revenue. It had to be spent by December 31st of last year. And really, by the time the county got organized and decided how much they wanted to allocate, we only had about six months to implement. So we, we received a little over $300,000 and I think we were able to do some really important things that we might not have been able to do otherwise. But I don't think that they were things that were initially on our priority list or, you know, on the immediate horizon going into 2020. So touchless faucets and fixtures, upgrades at all of our facilities absolutely a benefit. Some of the sprayers and sanitizing equipment. But, but again, some real challenges with that. And, and the county held those strings pretty tightly. So earlier this year, the American Rescue Plan Act was passed and specifically with dollars being allocated to cities who were left out, cities, at least non-entitlement cities, left out of that first round of CARES Act funding. So it was a long time getting to getting the American Rescue Plan Act passed. And then because we are a city of under 50,000, we are what's considered to be a non-entitlement city. And so our allocation was to come to us through the state of Kansas. And so those funds were distributed through this, to the state. And according to the legislation, the state had 30, had 30 days within which time to then allocate those resources to the communities. Learned last Friday morning, actually, as I was working on the budget memo, that the state of Kansas had thrown a little bit of a monkey wrench into that allocation. And they were apparently having a conversation about whether or not townships, of which there are over 1,100 in the state of Kansas, should be recipients of some of those ARP dollars. And included in your memo, I showed you kind of that distinction. They'd done a calculation and it was pretty significant, a million and a half dollars if, with no townships and $975,000 with townships. So kind of took a little bit of a detour Friday and Monday, contacted the governor's office at the request of the league, had conversations back and forth with the league and today, as did many other cities across the state. But today, the governor's office announced that it, the funds will not be distributed to townships. And so we will be receiving that full one and a half million dollar allocation. Very shortly on the heels of that press release, the State Treasury Department released the, the guidance and a portal through which we have to go in and sort of pre-certify revenue losses and budgets and a variety of different things by a certain date, I believe it's July 1st, in order for us to then receive that allocation. So we still have a few more steps, which we're ready and willing and certainly able to look at. There was also some really good guidance that has been put out by the National League of Cities, including some calculator tools that will help us comply very specifically with the requirements of the legislation as we look at potentially the opportunity to replace lost revenue. I think I mentioned in, and so on this slide, I'm sorry, I'm fogging up my glasses, so I can't see. According to the act, the plan can be used to support public health expenditures, addressing negative economic impacts, replacing lost public sector revenue, providing premium pay for essential workers, and investing in water, sewer, broadband infrastructure, and investments to improve access to clean drinking water. So stormwater is included in that category as well. I think I mentioned in, in the, in the memo, but I think staff's recommendation as we move through this process, now that we have a dollar amount, and we'll go through the calculator tool here and, and really narrow that down. We also have until December 31st of 2024 to allocate the resources. So we can look at lost revenue, not only in 2020, but revenue lost in 2021 and potentially if we anticipate revenue impacts going forward. So I think we would, would recommend and, and obviously as we'll discuss it, I think we would look to try to replace the lost revenue that we've had here primarily at the community center. What we know is that with the facility not being self-sufficient or having 100% cost recovery as it is, it already impacts resources available to us in the general fund. And then that lost revenue certainly exacerbated or increased that situation. So by, by allowing us to use that to replace revenue, we have the opportunity to rebuild and replenish resources and reserves in the general fund, which you have a lot more flexibility in spending ultimately. And so that, again, we, let me just touch very quickly on the last slide. And, yep. Yes, I'm sorry. No, not all this year. So we'll get half this year and then the, the second half a year from now. So I would imagine by August 1st, we will have that first half distribution. And if you go back and look at kind of the overview of parks and recreation revenues, I haven't, again, haven't plugged it into the calculator, but if you just look kind of our budget to actual, we lost about $1.2 million in anticipated revenue in, just in 2020 alone. Okay. Finally, just again, talking about general fund, fund balance and our current 25% fund balance goal. This has been something that has been a policy and a policy goal of the council. We have through primarily the performance of use tax revenues, going back to 2016, 2017, been able to really rebuild that, not only rebuild that fund balance, but to generate excess fund balance and reserves, which as we know, put us in a really strong position as we were started, starting to be impacted by COVID and the budget challenges that we were looking at in 2020. And quite honestly, this year, we didn't rely entirely on those reserves to close that gap. And that was certainly, I know, a goal of the council and absolutely a goal of the staff. We, we continued to make reductions, reducing our overall revenues to the tune of about 2.2 million and reducing expense, expenses, not equal to that, but close to that. And part of that is due in part because the council made a decision to continue to keep all of our staff employed throughout that pandemic. And again, as salaries and benefits become one of our big drivers, we didn't, we didn't see that corresponding drop in expenses, but we did save money over what we budgeted and we saved money over what we saw in reduced expenditures as well. So we started, I think, the year with a little 1.5, 6, 1.6 million in excess unencumbered fund balance. We ended the year with about 1.5 million. And just, you know, a reminder here, it's easy to see that big number and then forget that we've got some things that are reserved or restricted for specific purposes, which we've tried to outline here. But we still have that excess fund balance available to us as we go through this budget process. One of the other things that I didn't do a slide on, but was included in the memo was, one of the questions in the budget survey was if you had the ability and sole responsibility to, to spend that excess fund balance, what would you spend it on? And so those items were identified in the memo. And I actually combined both the council responses and the leadership team's responses on that. So I thought it would, it would be interesting to kind of take a look at that. And again, many of those aligned with the priorities that we were talking about earlier. You know, lots of it returned back to residents in the form of direct services, many funds towards the small business community, infrastructure work, residential streets, funding for implementation of the Climate Action Plan, prioritize outstanding CIP projects, LED streetlights, mental health co-responder, acquisition of additional green space, et cetera. So I think our priorities for how we would spend that haven't changed much over the last year. But I think we will have the opportunity to continue to look at as we, as we build out our asset management plans and our programs and we get to that more complete look of, you know, we turn a knob here or a dial here, we make a decision on a sales tax renewal or a parks and, you know, for streets or parks and recreation, or we look at mill levy changes. Those things all work in concert. And it's, it's never a perfect system because the timing is never aligned exactly, you know, as you would like it to, to have all the data at one particular time. But I think we, we will have a lot as we go through this 2022 budget process. The other thing that we will have, a couple of the members of the leadership team talked about the Direction Finder survey that is out currently. I don't know if any of you actually received it, but it is out and we expect for the results to be back mid-July. So we will still have an opportunity to look at those results, those survey results, before we make any final decisions on the 2022 budget. And then obviously those will inform our budget conversations and discussions going forward. So I didn't, again, I made a slide and then deleted it, but in your packet and the updated packet that Audrey sent out, I did want to touch on just kind of, before we open it up for just more general questions and discussions, kind of the upcoming meeting dates that we're, that we anticipate and what we anticipate that we will be covering at those. If, if there are other things that it is important for the council to discuss that we haven't identified, let's talk about those. We have a few dates that are still available to us between now and the end of the budget process. So tonight we did, we talked about kind of the overview priorities, general fund revenues. We have a work session scheduled for June 23rd, where we will present to you the line item budgets, general fund expenses. And we will start into, and so general fund will include supplemental requests for the general fund as well. And then we'll start into the capital improvement program. The capital improvement program, I don't know that we will be able to cover all of the general fund and all of the CIP. Usually we, we split those two. And again, that's, that's where we've got a little bit of condensing that has happened because of our schedule this year. But we'll have that opportunity to look at the five-year plans and recommendations for street programs, stormwater program, parks and recreation. Tentatively, we are scheduled at the July 7th FNA committee to bring back then kind of that recommended budget. What, what we may need to do is either look at an additional meeting date or spread that out a little bit. It's just going to depend on how quickly we can get through the general, if we can get through the general fund and, and CIP and on the 23rd. Right now, the committee agendas for July 7th are pretty light. So we'll be able to spend the majority of our time that evening continuing to work on, on the budget. You know, again, while it's certainly not a maintenance budget to the same extent as this last year's was, I think, you know, we, we still have approached it from our perspective somewhat conservatively. Then we have tentatively scheduled in connection with the city council meeting on July 21st, the community dialogue on the 2022 budget. And I think you know, we struggle to get people to come out and participate in that process. We will continue to try, we'll continue to try to do that. What we like to do is, you know, have us close to a recommended budget available at that point so that the community can react and respond to that. But we always try to build in enough time following that, that if priorities need to change or be adjusted, you have the opportunity to react and respond to things that may come up through that, that public dialogue process. And then we have a work session scheduled for July 28th, which would be kind of that final review after the community dialogue, after the receipt of the Direction Finder survey results, to put together the, the 2021 budget revisions and the 2022 budget. Then on August 4th, we would be scheduling our public hearing, which is the public hearing that's required by state statute, that no one ever shows up to. But we scheduled that at our August 4th committee meeting. Again, what that does is set the maximum expenditure authority and maximum expenditure limits. So the one thing we can't do after August 4th or after publication of that is change those maximum expenditure limits. We can bring budgets down, but we can't increase budgets after that point. And then adopting the 2022 budget and our budget resolution on August 18th at that council meeting. And then it's required to be certified to the county by the 25th of August. So I am going to sit back down, happy to kind of run through thoughts, reactions, which are there things on the priority list from your retreat or from our retreats, from the budget survey that you would like to see us focus attention on here in the next couple of weeks? Or things that you heard in the department, you know, kind of the department head presentations. So I'm going to sit down and.
Any further questions for oral or staff?
Right now, we don't have anything.
I had a scheduling question and then a more substantive question. But the scheduling question was, I think by state statute, if we'd keep the mill levy the same this year, we'd have to have a special hearing due to the increased valuations. Am I right on that? And if so, where does that fall in the schedule?
Not one of those pieces, we're still, yes, Senate Bill 13.
Yes.
And all the accoutrement that come with that. So yes, we, we need to really drill down and look at what that final assessed valuation is and then what that, what that would require. So we will do that here next week. And as we come into the work session on the 23rd, we'll know. we will do that here next week. And as we come into the work session on the 23rd, we'll know that.
Okay. And then my, my more substantive question, that I think I'd mentioned to you before, was, we've talked before about for outdoor parks, if we want to kind of, you know, tackle one park at a time and make big improvements, have a signature park, or if the overall approach would be kind of more piecemeal. And I think as a council, we haven't decided that approach. And so where will that fall into the discussions to be able to inform this budget cycle?
Well, I think that's, that's up to you. I mean, we, we had been approaching the CIP, you know, you, there's been some expressed, and that was expressed again in, in the council survey, we had approached that, that that, we had hoped to be through all of the conceptual park planning processes by then. We obviously are not. Mohawk Park, I think, goes for its last public meeting tomorrow, Broadmoor later this month. And I know Penn is working to put the stakeholder group together for Waterworks Park. So I think if that's, that's something we can either schedule on the 23rd and then make an adjustment for the rest of the CIP. You know, that, I think that, I would look to you all to say where you would, or how much time you think you need or want, or how you'd like to build that in. Because I think that, I mean, it will obviously impact, you know, what, what we have planned in the CIP. And as we talked about a couple of weeks ago, yes, understand and appreciate frustrations with the, the pace at which outdoor park improvements are moving. That was intentional to a certain degree with the Parks and Recreation Sales Tax. I mean, of the three tiers of pool, community center, outdoor parks, that was that third tier, gearing ourselves up to be able to, you know, understand what we wanted to do and take a full program to the community in connection with that renewal. Now, we know we can't, we've got to get through the rest of the conceptual park planning pretty quickly, because we're going to need to make a decision about a timeline on renewal of that Parks and Recreation Sales Tax next year. And what we know from our experience this year with the street sales tax is that the Election Commission provides just very limited windows if the council is inclined to do a mail ballot election again.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, personally, it does look like we have some time between the 4th and the 18th, if we did need to move things back. I think, you know, the agenda for the 23rd perhaps seems ambitious even without an in-depth parks discussion. So maybe splitting that up or making that one only Parks and CIP and doing the general fund another night. I don't know what others think on that.
I agree with Sally's comments. I'd like to have kind of a more in-depth dive into what our long-term plan is for outdoor park improvements.
Thank you. So let me ask you this, if we, yes, you're absolutely right. The 23rd is ambitious regardless. What information do you feel like you need or want to inform that conversation around the, the approach to outdoor park improvements and park development? And that, that may help me then decide how we split this, or what, what we think we can pair up on the 23rd.
Yeah, I don't know if it was part of the planned CIP discussion, but maybe hearing from you and Penn, what the larger park improvement project ideas were for the budget year 2022. And, you know, could those make sense sort of regardless of what comes out of the conceptual plans, so that we could have a couple, you know, bigger but not full park reconstruction, you know, wins for 2022, and give us, you know, a little time to have the rest of those conceptual plans come in and really start, you know, when we have the sales tax renewed, making bigger progress faster on that.
So what I might suggest then is that we focus on the 23rd on parks, CIP, and the supplemental requests for the general fund. Because I think the more time potentially you all have to kind of look at and digest those, we'll probably also go ahead and provide you with the line item budget so that you have, again, more time to look at that. But I think if we, if we focus on that, then we can circle back. I mean, streets, until we, streets are pretty straightforward, and I think stormwater is pretty straightforward at this point, because until we get the sales tax potentially renewed, we kind of know what those, those revenue streams are set for us. And we've got the projects identified in those instances. So I think that portion of the CIP is going to come together a little more effectively.